No vote.
Great, so we're give the call to order. Um, roll call.
We're all here.
And yes, Steve.
Very good. I'm filing here, more here, alright. So we will open up for public comment and just to make sure, to clarify for everybody, um, there's a public hearing, we'll take comments on the topics of the public hearing. At the time of the public hearings, this open public comment is for just general things that people want to bring up.
So is the lighting going to be a public hearing?
Pardon me?
The lighting?
Yes.
There is a lighting probably carrying this time.
Okay. And, uh, when?
Okay. So. You guys have any, you're here for your hearing.
Yeah.
Alright, so we will open the public hearing on. On variance twenty-five oh three. The criteria which must be satisfied for approval of this action are listed in the city staff report. Public testimony must be directed to those criteria or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation which the testifier believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements of evidence sufficient to afford the planning commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues preclude an appeal based on that issue. Before the conclusion of the hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments and testimony. The commission will decide whether the hearing will be continued to another date or whether the record would be left open for at least seven days. If you're testifying, please state your name and city of residence. If you wish to be notified of a continuance, appeal or other action on this amendment, please print your name and complete your mailing address on the form at the door. Chair reading, I'm just reading, I'm supposed to read the application. Alright. So, um. For process discussion, are we supposed to, we don't have to read the whole form, just the?
Uh, I think you already explained or managed with it.
Alright.
The lunch of the staff report.
Sure, well, for the application, I agreed what's requested.
Oh, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Um, so what is being requested? Um, the applicant wants to add a covered patio to a non-conforming building. And the state, uh, the nature of the request is they're needing more space to store things under a covered area. Um, and it meets setback requirements is based on their statement. Okay. So we'll go into the staff reports.
Okay, good evening, everyone, uh, members of the planning commission. We have an application here, this is variance file twenty-five dash oh three. Property address is three sixty South Olive Street. Site is zoned R three, contains low, almost fifteen thousand square feet. The applicant is requesting of a variance to expand an existing non-conforming use. Well, with the construction of a one thousand eight square foot covered patio on the west side of these existing storage building. Now, again, this property does contain an existing storage building. And while the R three zone permits storage buildings, uh, the zone only allows the building as an accessory structure to an existing dwelling. As the site does not contain a dwelling, the development code considers the structure as a non-conforming use and subject to, uh, provisions in chapter ten eighty-eight. In this chapter, the planning commission may approve the expansion of a non-conforming use, subject to the approval of a variance. Now, please note the applicants expanded the storage building by constructing the, uh, covered patio. So in other words, that patio currently exists. The expansion proceeded without a building permit approval, and I believe your packet has the violation, uh, letter. And as know, the expansion does require approval of a variance. So if the, so this variance application, uh, essentially addresses that requirement. Um, we have certain procedures we need to follow. Um, this report, um, follows those provisions. And as of the date of this report and this presentation, I'm not aware of any comments from, uh, neighbors or affected agencies. Now, under section ten one hundred, uh, dot O and O, the planning commission has the power to grant or deny a variance to, uh, in this case, to expand a non-conforming use. Uh, the variance must be based on a particular, uh, special or unusual circumstance related to a property and by itself. Um, cannot be granted to allow use of a property not otherwise permitted in the zone. So again, this hearing is in conformance with that. Uh, section oh three, uh, subsection oh two oh, uh, is the variance process and application requirements, applicant met those. And under oh three oh, the commission may, uh, grant approval subject to the following, uh, criteria. Item one, there are unnecessary and reasonable hardships or other difficulties that can only be relieved by modifying, uh, the requirement. In this case, the applicants did not have identified any hardships or practical difficulties that required the construction of the, uh, additional, uh, awning. Under item two, there are extraordinary, uh, or exceptional circumstances that apply to the land or the building. Uh, that do not apply to other lands or buildings in the vicinity. I think the only at this point potential unique circumstance by the applicant was the need for additional storage space. There is no apparent extraordinary circumstance though associated with the land. Recursory examination of air photos, uh, did not defy, did not identify other residential properties developed with non-conforming uses. With this comparison, the only unusual circumstance is the existing building. And right, the third item granting will not be material detrimental to the public, uh, welfare. In general, I don't think this patio cover should not be detrimental. Uh, there might be some issue if there is open storage, uh, it could create potential, uh, neighborhood issues, uh, through the, uh, creation of an attractive nuisance. Um, fourth item, variance necessary to preserve your property right by the, uh, petitioner. Again, the R three zone only allows storage buildings as an accessory use and not a primary use. Uh, this is not the case, uh, the structure itself is non-conforming. By not allowing the expansion, this will not affect the property owner's current right to maintain the non-conforming use. And also allow other uses, uh, that are permitted within the zone. The fifth one, uh, granting of the application will not be adversely affect the health or welfare. Um, I don't think there's any particular issues with this particular wanting or patio cover that would have impact on the neighborhood's, uh, health and safety. And finally, granting of the application will conform the intent and purpose of the title. Again, I just note that this is a existing non-conforming use. Uh, you do not approve variances to expand, uh, uses that are not allowed in the zone. The remainder of the items from oh four oh to oh eight oh, uh, discuss sign variances, uh, which do not apply here, of course. And other, uh, administrative provisions that will depend on the decision of the planning commission. I want to note that although I provided a summary here that appeared to indicate that, well, in fact, the applicant did not meet the decision criteria for a variance. This was a tough one, uh, for me to work with. I think if I just squinted my eyes, uh, and I have to follow the regulations. But looking at it, I did not see any overall detrimental impact through the construction of the patio. And, um, uh, I'm not aware of any, uh, concerns or issues from the neighbors with regard to its, uh, existence. So if the commission can establish findings, uh, supporting the request, then enclosing the patio area. Um, my, my only concern with that, uh, the patio area not being closed without prior, uh, approval. So based on the review of the application, I think this, uh, they do not meet the requirements and this would be a denial. I will want to make one change on the issue of the denial, though. I do not recommend placing conditions associated with the denial. I talked to other colleagues on this, it's better just to say gain with conditions or no. So my recommendation, if it's denied, it is simply denied, no conditions associated with that denial. However, if the commission can, uh, establish findings in support of the request, staff recommends placement of the following that, um, the patio, uh, is limited to what exists, uh, enclosure of that area is prohibited, without prior approval. The applicants will get building permits from Yamhill County and obviously the compliance, uh, with these standards are up to the applicant. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the planning commission may have.
Right, um. Does anyone have?
I'm good with the dumb questions because I have not understood what is existing here and what's being asked for. So, well, I, I see this drawing that has, um, an existing, um, building of a hundred and sixty-eight feet. You know, a dimension on that, and then a twenty-four by twelve feet outline. So can you tell me what those two things are?
Okay, basically what you have, the storage building exists, the big structure itself exists. They installed the patio, the, what is it, twenty-four by, I want to say forty-two? Twenty-four by forty-two square foot patio, uh, on the building without a building permit. And that is why we were notified of this. And again, I think you have a letter dated April twenty-five from the county that, you know, construction without getting a permit, which brings us here to the planning commission.
So the, the sixty-eight foot building is, is, was permitted and it complies, is that true?
That I cannot say for certain. I have a suspicion that maybe this property was divided off in some way with the building there. The applicant may speak to that. My thing at this juncture is the structure is there. And so now the question is, is it fair to allow them to extend a patio cover? You know, a thousand square foot patio cover, uh, on the west side of the building? And that's the issue before the planning commission.
And so if it's not, if it's denied, they have to tear it down?
That would be my understanding, it would be an enforcement action, which is one reason, again, I don't want to place conditions on a denial. Just let that matter go its own way. Again, the applicants, regardless of the decision here, um, pro or, uh, opponents, actions can be always appealed to the city council. So yes, there is a good possibility that would have to be removed.
So it appears to me, I, I can just give my opinion, appears to me that if they had come in to get a permit, they couldn't have got it. Um, it doesn't, I don't know that, they could have maybe come to a hearing without a building already there. And all these things would have said, nope, doesn't comply, nope, it's not a dwelling, nope, nope, nope. And but they went ahead, uh, went ahead. They built it anyway, thinking, hey, it's a free country, you can build a patio, I don't know what they're thinking, doesn't matter. Um, and so we're going to say, okay, hmm, you built it, you're going to get away with it. Or we can't let this happen because it's a bad precedent and this could happen over and over and over and over.
That's about it in a nutshell. Again, I recognize that every community has a different view of this. And so I, you know, I don't want to force the issue one way or the other. I want to note, again, if findings can be made, I think some reasonable conditions can be placed on it. Um, normally there is a, uh, criteria for variances that, uh, the issue is not the result of a prior action by the applicant. In other words, you ask permission, not forgiveness. And that's kind of one of the standard things, but that's not within your criteria. I just want to note that. These are always tough, I looked at it sideways, knowing that. Uh, I don't think they met it, I'll stand by that. I think though that if the planning commission chooses to approve it, I think some reasonable findings can be made. Uh, kind of close. I'll look at that.
Okay, so it, in looking at the staff report, um. So you, you list out the different sections, um, under oh three oh?
Yes.
Um, so if one of those. If we find that one of those fits the criteria. Then, or that are, for, for allowing a variance, does that essentially allow us to approve it?
No, you have six different criteria and an applicant has to meet all six.
Hey, that was my question, yeah.
Yes. Uh, I always use the baseball metaphor, you have to bet a thousand.
Well, can we, could I get, take the opinion of, you know, looking at one of these things that doesn't comply? And it says, oh, it has to be, uh, on an existing dwelling. Well, it wasn't a dwelling, it was just a building. And I might think, well, that's a dumb, what, why is that? What, what, that, that's a dumb word, I don't even think anybody should have to enforce that. And so. Can planning commissions do that or is that what gets appeals made to the city council?
That's what makes appeals and lawsuits. In other words, the primary issue is that, let's look at a residential subdivision. Everyone builds a home on it, on their lot, and someone takes a lot and just puts in a garage. That's contrary to the intent of the zone and the neighborhood, and they just kind of work on cars in that garage. Now, no one minds if you work on a car, but the whole idea of residential neighborhood is that you have a home. Someone's living there and not just using a building for storage or, um, using it for a shop. It has to be in conjunction with the dwelling. And that's why it avoids having these kind of non-residential uses plopped in residential areas. And that's the reason behind that requirement.
Well, it seems unusual that there was already a dwelling, I mean, not, there was never a dwelling. Well, never, you said it might have been split off from a property that had a dwelling. But there's not a dwelling on it the way it exists, yet that building is there. If they had come to build that, a permit to build that building, they might have gotten the answer, there's no dwelling there for you to add on to. You can't just build a building and work on cars in it like you talked about.
Correct, the other, but again, I, I, I have no evidence of the history, huh, on how that structure got there. Uh, possibly the, um, applicants can address that. My issue was, it was there. Now, the next question is, can they expand? Um, so I couldn't find any reason within the cri- criteria to allow that. I, I, again, I am on mixed, mixed emotions on this one. Um, I understand that people, you know, they have a building, they have some improvements, they want to maintain that. I, I fully understand that. I'm also faced with the fact that we have a development code. And we're responsible for, you know, applying the rules and regulations which apply to everyone, so.
This is the, this is the case because it's residential. Uh, you can build a building to work on cars in a different zone, a different zoned area.
For example, a C one zone would be an option. I think the R L C also may allow that. There's been so many little changes to the code, uh, but yes, yes, C one zone would be one option.
To protect, is to protect a residential na- nature of the neighborhood. Now, I haven't been by the place. Is that neighborhood really look really cozy, whozzy residential or is it kind of commercial looking? Are we really protecting the neighborhood from the, is the intent needed in this place?
Well, and that's why you're having the public hearing to determine if there are adjacent owners who are here tonight to discuss it. Or on a Zoom, if there is any issues. And I think also bear in mind, it's important for the kind of applicant, uh, uh, stay at their peace as well. And you know, this might be bleeding in a little bit to the discussion toward the end of the, uh, hearing. So, so I, I just, I see your point, I hear your point. And again, faced with the facts, I had to go in this, uh, direction. I hate writing denials. Trust me, I don't like to do that. I'd rather go in hand in hand, knowing what we need to do to get it right, but this is.
Just one more, can they apply for a zoning change? Do zoning changes happen in the middle of?
Um, they can apply for a zone change. The zone change, change would go to C one or possibly the R L C zone. And that might be an option, but then again, you have to go through the process of, you know, amending the zone map and also the comp plan map. And that requires, uh, planning commission recommendation to the council and council, uh, approval. But that certainly is an option.
If we deny that, then they could, they could try that path.
They are welcome to come back and apply. Uh, I don't think there's anything on the code that prohibits a re-application for a different type of an application. In other words, you don't keep applying over and over, but if there's a different type of application, uh, they are welcome to do so. I think part of their argument would be that there is a non-residential structure there. Um, uh, the point is though, once it's, once it's zoned for non-residential uses, you're kind of stuck with that. So in other words, this time around may not be an issue with the use of the structure. Next person comes in, finds, uh, use that's allowed in the C one zone. And then has something, it's permitted outright, and then it gets a little, uh, more of an impact with the neighborhood. So a zone change is permanent. Unless it's changed again.
Okay, that looks like, uh, fraught, that would be fraught. Maybe your staff report would reflect, of that application would reflect that concern.
I would, I would want to look at the findings in terms of what they would come up with. I'd also like to hear their testimony and maybe give a little bit more of a background on that. My other comment would be, um, probably take a little closer look at the neighborhood and see the impact and also the zoning map. Um, so there's, there's some open issues there, not issues, but just some, um, concerns or material I would need to follow up.
Okay, any other questions, anyone?
I, I know I haven't been on the planning commission, um, very long this time, but, um, I had a problem with the timeline of all of this. Because according to the letter, uh, that was written to the applicants by the planning commission, the, the, the county planning commission, this should have come before the planning in June or July, was it July? I don't remember, but we're hearing it now in November and I'm wondering what took so long for it to get here.
That, I can, I'd say this, this comes from the Yamhill County Building Department, which is a subset of county planning or community, county community development. Um, and so it got on here one way or the other, and, uh, it could very well be a matter of enforcement. In other words, push now has come to shove, and you either got to follow through and get authorization. And they finally applied, seeking authorization. Um.
They, they applied on what, the date of the application was?
The application was deemed complete on October twenty-second. And it was probably submitted maybe a couple of weeks beforehand.
The date on the application is July fifteenth. That's the date on the application for the variance.
Okay.
I'm just, that's why I'm just, I don't understand the timeline, that's all, if you can explain that.
I.
Oh, okay. So they were given the letter from county, um. I believe Michelle came in with the application to get it all figured out and she didn't have all of the information. And so she took it back, so that would be the July date, she took it back and then bringing it back until October.
Okay.
Yeah, because the application doesn't really go forward until it's deemed complete. So you can kind of shuffle through three or four times, get all your data together. And also in other situations and other cities, waiting for the check to drop by to begin the process, so.
I just didn't understand the timeline of the whole thing.
Yeah, I got it, I got it the first part of October when things were sufficient enough for me to proceed.
Okay, alright, alright, done, questions? Okay, so we'll open it up to public testimony in favor, um. Starting with the applicant. That's you guys.
Nice talk.
Yeah. And state your name and your address.
Uh, my name is John Gregor, and the address and question I plead is three sixty South Olive Street. Um, so this is, I'm here tonight, actually, I'm going to start with worst case scenario, I have to tear it down. Best case scenario would come to some type of a solution. Um, I think this goes a little bit deeper than just the building code, so I'd like to back it up to when I originally came in. Um, I knew we had a questionable piece of property, so to clear it up, we bought that piece of property, it was split up. Larry and Rilla Meyer originally owned their piece, our piece and the piece that the Parker family built on. We purchased it, I don't know when we purchased it.
Nineteen?
Nineteen. Um, the original intent was for us to, you know, I was actually going to run my business out of there, but once I realized that it was not zoned that way. And it sounds like Demos ran into some issues, we just chose to turn it into just extra storage, you know? So we're not there very often.
We'll go then to build on it eventually.
So I guess that's where my frustration comes in with this, as you really, you know, yeah, there wasn't a structure. So I originally came in prior to doing any of this, asking if I could build a shop in the back edge of the property, because it's actually a double lot. And then I was hoping to move all of other stuff that's stored in the existing building to the new structure in the back, which would allow us to, you know, develop the front half of the piece of property and actually put a residence on it, which I think would have been best for the city of Yamhill. Um. I don't know that the city did a great job helping, it was just in any one direction. I actually feel like I got met with resistance even back then. Um, when it comes to this structure, I'll be honest, I, I built it because I had a need to, to, to source some things and I wanted them out of the rent. I didn't think about it, it was an ugly shop and I was making it look better, I really thought I had good intentions. I didn't think about it. It was an ugly shop and I was making it look better. I really thought I had good intentions. Fact of the matter is, is it was supposed to rain and we were having our daughter's graduation party there, because we can't host it at our house, because it's too steep of a hill to get up. That was a one time done and only deal, so I guess my questions, I don't really have any questions, I'm here to just say, hey, I made a mistake. I think there was a better way to handle it. To address your question. You asked if, I apologize, um. You had asked what took so long. The fact of the matter is, I came in, talked to representatives of the city. And they were very unwilling to help in any way, shape or form upon us in any type of a direction. What's that?
We're giving a variance both times.
We understand that, we were given a piece, we were given a document. Am I talking or are you?
I'm just letting you know.
Um, that's, I guess that's, that's the exact frustration that I, that, that, that we have is. We don't know, we know we have a, we know we have no compartment structure, the whole idea was to buy it. Use it for our needs and then develop and put a house on, in, in the front of it, that was always our deal. At the end of the day, I came in very reasonably several times asking questions, I even asked if I could get consultation with. I didn't catch your name, sir, on Zoom? Are you the building, what, what is your title?
No, I'm the contract city planner, I have nothing to do with building and I do not work for Yamhill County.
Okay, so further more answering your question. The, the, the project, I, I was notified that we had a problem. I instantly came to the city. They were like, we don't know what the problem is, we just know you're out of compliance. I'm like, okay. Followed it up with the building officials, I'm like, hey guys, what's going on? What do I need to do to make it right? I work with these guys every day, I'm a contractor. Nestor couldn't tell me, he's the code enforcement agent, he couldn't tell me what we were doing wrong, which I thought was a little frustrating. And that's a county thing, not a city thing, but it's like, okay, I'm trying to make right. Talked to Bo, talked to Mr. Kadiga, the building officials, and I'm like, hey. They're telling me I can't do that, and they're like, structurally, there's nothing there that you're doing wrong that we can see, albeit I should have came in and asked permission. So at the end of the day, I guess, any questions you guys may have, I'd love to answer them, I just. It's a, it's a two part, I, I think Michelle and I are as frustrated as the city is with us, and I think that there's probably some common ground what could be met. So any questions you guys may have, I'd love to be able to answer them for you.
Do any just talk up here? I think too, like, our intention of purchasing this lot was, we have two young ladies that. We were hoping to, with the housing market right now, housing prices are so high, we were hoping to kind of help them. By securing a lot, keeping the cost down so that we could build, you know, help them build or help them, you know, purchase and build themselves. In another couple of years, so we bought that with intentions of building on. That being said, we've used it as storage for our boat and our, you know, a Jeep and things like that. Knowing we weren't gonna build on it till that point in time, so.
But we also have first right of refusal of Larry and Rilla's piece of property, and that's the other reason we haven't been super motivated to develop. At some point in time, if we could purchase Larry and Rilla's place. If the option ever comes up, we would, we, we would do that, and then I actually intend to put it back together. Because as I understand it, there's actually two lots there, that's, that, that one lot is two billable tax lots, is that correct? Because that's what I was, that's what I was informed by the city when we purchased it. I could actually build five townhomes on it.
I don't have that information.
And then I actually was told it was zoned R two, not R three, so that was new to me and I don't know what the difference is. And I don't think it really matters in the instance, so I guess.
What does it look like in that area for the housing? It is behind, like, the only people that can see it are Larry and Rilla, who we had talked through through the whole thing. They were very understanding, they were like, wow, it looks so nice, thank you. You beautified the front of the property, now looks like it fits with the area, you put flowers out, you, you know, added some curb appeal.
And tried to make it a little bit more private.
So we've beautified it in the sense of, from the curb appeal side of things. And none of the neighbors have complained to us at all, other than, hey, it looks great.
That's not over, I mean, neighbors be darned, I mean.
Like, what does it look like in the neighborhood? You know, what is it, is it? A sort of dumb?
So I still, I guess, I'm still looking for a, I came in and I asked, and yes, you said there's a variance form. The variance really, the six points that I, I heard tonight, that's the first time I heard those. That is the very first time, that is the first time anybody's explained any of that to me. Um, as far as the, and in fact, that entire structure, if you go put a tape measure on it, it's actually built and. The concrete that I poured, I actually poured diamonds, so I could actually pull those posts out, those posts are actually taller, because my hope was at some point in time. I could remove that covering and repurpose those building materials to the back to build the shop that I came in originally for. A year and a half ago, so I mean, I really did try to do my best to make it modular, but at this point, I'm like, I don't really know what to do.
The shop also housed a manufactured home.
Yeah, there, that was.
Like years ago, so that's the original structure, was it covered or manufactured? If you guys were asking, like, what, what was?
What happened there?
Sean, I think we questioned them after the testimony. Okay, thank you. Yeah, there may be an opportunity for some, a little discussion. Um, is there any testimony against?
I just have a question. So if they stepped up and built a house right here.
Right, where?
On that whole empty space.
That's the back of the lot.
Okay.
So they were, they were talking about putting a house here sometime.
Okay, but do they omit?
Yeah.
So somewhere on this piece of property, if they stepped up today. Got a building permit and put a house on it, does that change what we're talking about?
I don't think code would allow a house at the back of the lot.
Actually, yes, it will. Is it double lot, flat lot?
Okay.
Would that change anything?
Okay, yes, yes, I did, um. By having a dwelling there, this becomes a, well, okay, there's a lot of moving parts here. Um, one is the location where the house would be built. And you're right, we have a prohibition on placing accessory structures in the front yard. However, as a pre-existing use, I think. We should be able to work around that. Also, there's a ratio of the size of the home to the accessory. Structure, but again, I think we could kind of work around that, simply saying, look, here's a pre-existing use, it's there. Um, and then let's, and they put a house, this is the only reasonable place to put a home. That would be very beneficial. I, I, I think, I think, let me put it this way. I think a good argument can be made that even if the house is in the back, that would, that would alleviate the issue. I do have a recommendation, though, at this point for the planning commission to consider if they, if they want to.
Yes, please, go ahead.
There was a lot of new testimony tonight with the applicants. It appears that they were, I'll just put to you this way. Planning can be a little complex, and if people are not prepared, it can even be more complex and terrifying. When you finally get to a public hearing. I would like to suggest, since we're very early in the process. And the hundred twentieth day is not until February, which is next year. That we continue this hearing till next month. I would like in turn the applicants to put into writing. Everything they have on this property that might have been, helped me a bit. I just saw their application and it met the requirements. But that might have helped me at least walk through some options. Here that I might have been able to present to the planning commission. My suggestion again is to just close the hearing. Continue it until next month. Uh, be sure that, and allow the applicants two weeks in which to, uh, provide me additional information. And then I will write a new staff report for the December meeting. It's just that I think we can get lost down a rabbit hole if we start looking at. You know, permutations right now with all this information. I'd like to be able to sort it out and help with the planning commission. Again, we're nowhere near the hundred twenty day deadline. And this would allow everyone to, I think, step back, let me look at additional information. And maybe I could help, uh, the commission and the applicants.
My, my concern, and I, and, and I suspect that's. Why he's asking, but was raising his hand, what kind of guidance can we give them so they can prepare that?
Okay, I'm gonna, first of all, publicly state, you just made a presentation. Put that in writing, that would really be helpful. The other thing is that, um, I suggest they give me a call. I can probably help them out with a little bit of, uh. You know, just sort of to walk them through some of these things, uh, so they don't feel all alone. Bear in mind, this is not a, a very simple one because of the circumstance. But I think if we have more background information, uh, we can see where. Things may have connected or disconnected, we might be able to. Um, arrive at a different conclusion. I'm not making promises. I'm just saying that testimony of this evening, I thought was very helpful to understanding the bigger picture. And I think it would, uh. Be worth the applicants and the commission's time to punt this till next month. But give the applicants a chance to come in. And, you know, in writing where the planning commission can see it too. So that's my suggestion.
Great, thank you, Walt. Um, Mary, yeah, yeah, no, just looking here, okay, commission question, so this is the right time.
My observation was, what I picked up on that was the most important thing. I didn't have before and probably Walt picked up on this. That what existed on that piece of property was at one time, a home. A modular home. That's an important factor, I think, for you to include in your written comments. All you know about that.
We know back on that, other than water and sewer connections are still there.
Yeah, so I think that's the thing that caught my attention.
Your observation. I am, um, I was. The fact that they haven't seen the staff report before now. Is really to their disadvantage. I, you know, when I read that, I wanted to look up at them, go, have you guys read this? Why are you even here? Because this is a no, no, no. So, our job is to go by criteria. So when they come back again, with Walt's help, maybe some of these criteria can be addressed, because. In, in my mind, the way I'm on the planning commission is I go by the criteria.
And I, and that's what I was gonna say, is that. When we've had the hearings about whether it's gas station or, or whatever. We've been following the criteria that's written in the code. And if the applicant wants to appeal that to the city council, that's where a more. I don't know what the terminology is, a, a more, a more, uh.
Involved.
Involved discussion and decision may take place. Our job is to check, check it against the, the criteria. That's always been my position, and I think Ken's had that.
Can I ask a question? You guys are the planning commission for city of Yamhill. What does the planning commission, what, what is your guys' goal moving forward in? I mean, it's a lot that's doing nothing, there's no value in the building, we know there's no val- value in the building. To Michelle and I, community, you know, we are community members, we live ruly, but our daughters graduated, well, one has, the other one happens. I don't like seeing the sixty-five hundred square foot minimum lot size, I think that, I mean, in that area, they're, they're big lots. If we could be patient and we could purchase Larry and Rilla's place, if and when that became available. Our intention was to put it back together so that that remained just a big backyard. And, I mean, the building could stay, I mean, I'm not opposed to making it look a little nicer. I could put like a western front on it to make it look a little nicer inside the city, we're willing to work with everybody. I just, I was hoping that we could have this kind of conversation prior to getting to the point where it's like. Do or die, like, isn't that the whole idea of the planning commission is to work together as the representatives, as the patrons of the city? Or my office, that's my question, because we have not felt that way, I mean, we actually felt like we've been a mile from the word go.
I can't speak to the, to the process that led it to here.
Sure, I understand.
But, um. Our role is to look at the code and. Apply the standards that are in the code, the decisions, and, um, it allows for some variance.
Who has the fortitude for looking at what's, what's best for the city? Like, is that a different council or commission, or is that all on your guys' shoulders?
I think, I think I could probably answer this a little bit. Yeah, the difficulty when it comes to land use planning for the state. Is that it's very much a judicial process when it gets to public hearings. The planning commission and staff are obligated, I mean, literally obligated to follow the rules and regulations. Adopted by the city. Um, there are provisions for variances and a few other things, but there's not a lot of latitude. In other words, if you put up a structure and everything has to be a two by six, you can't put a two by two. You have to put the correct, uh, size up there. And the same thing here, what makes it confusing is that when, by the time it gets to a planning commission. It's very much a, in fact, this is through a court case about fifty years ago. That this is a judicial hearing in the sense that there's rules of evidence. And it has to be shown where you do or do not meet the requirements. It's not a situation where we can negotiate on what's best under the circumstances. It sounds, it sounds cruel, and I don't mean to make it sound that bad, but. Um, or it doesn't sound fair, but the planning commission is in a tough spot. As is staff, as is the folks at city hall, to make sure that we follow the rules adopted by the council. This is why I'm suggesting is that if you can contact me. And Angela can give you that info, give me a call, or you and Michelle give me a call. And, and let's go through some options or discussing what is needed to help the planning commission. I want you to understand, I'm not the decision maker, I have to through the evidence. And, uh, provide some advice to the commission, but the commission is the ultimate decision maker. So yes, it can be frustrating, I actually teach classes on this stuff. And boy, I, I've heard my share of interesting stories from the folks I teach. So, um, I think at this juncture, it just would be fair for everyone. If you can give us some background information, a little bit more detail, and again, start off by giving me a call. And this thing still pushes it another month, so nothing has to be done to the property right now.
Sounds great to us.
Alright, so, um.
Thank you for your time and your explanation, Walt.
Yeah, so, um, we could go through the rebuttal of in favor and against and. And all of that, um, or if everyone agrees, we can move to the continuance. Alright, so, yeah, so I'm looking for one of three motion to close the hearing. Uh, to continue the hearing to a date of at least seven days from today, or a motion to keep. The record open at least seven days for additional written arguments. So, um, what we're talking, Walt, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're talking about continuing the hearing to a date in the future.
Right, you are requesting that the, um, you were closing the hearing. To continue it to December fifteenth. At Yamhill City Hall at six thirty and requesting that the applicant. This will allow me to make sure I can get a staff report done. I think in all fairness, given the holiday. That, uh, a written commentary by December one. Um, to the city of Yamhill, so I can be sure to get the staff report in.
Get that done, we have a trip planned and have had it planned, um.
When is our next meeting? December fifteenth?
Well, you know, what, can we? Um, we'll do our very best. I think that after I have a competition with him, I think I can uncomplicate it and make it pretty simplistic and get it to you guys if that makes.
Well, hundred and twenty days would be in February, am I correct? Yeah, so it could be put off, I mean, until after the holidays. I mean, it could, in essence.
We don't want to drag this on.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And we also have to consider that hundred twenty days includes if they want to appeal it.
Right.
Uh huh.
Right. Yeah.
Right, so I need a motion.
I make a motion that we close the public hearing and, uh.
Continue it.
Continue it, uh, at our next meeting after the. Right, the application is revised and.
Alright, I have a second?
My second.
Alright.
Can I get you to clarify that it's gonna be December fifteenth at six thirty P M?
Yes. Continue.
Did we?
December fifteenth at six.
The December seventh date for the report.
December first.
And, um, we request the applicant provide additional information on a December first for that meeting.
So sooner, sooner the better is fine, but no later than December one. That's, that's what we're after.
Is there a time that works better for me to reach out?
Well. Walt, is there a good time for him to reach out to you, Walt?
Uh, let's see, da, 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 da. I'm, I'm pretty open sometimes. It's, you give me a call and we play phone tag. But I do not dismiss phone messages. Okay, I will get back to you. We will, we will talk.
Okay, I will try to reach out tomorrow afternoon. I'm tied up until about one, but I'll reach out tomorrow afternoon.
Oh, that sounds good. Give it a try and let's go from there.
Appreciate it.
So we have a second. We need to vote on that, so.
Or a lie.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, your eye?
More eye.
Alright, and we will close.
Who was the second? Sorry.
It was Mary.
Mary second.
Alright, so our next agenda item.
You guys are down.
Yes, thank you for coming in. What's that?
Do we need to say it all?
Nope, yeah.
We caused enough trouble for one night.
Alright.
Alright, uh, so our next agenda item is. The D C A twenty-four dash oh-three code amendment, um, for commercial exterior lighting. And.
And at this juncture, since it's a code amendment, you just have to open the hearing.
Oh, okay, so we open a public hearing on the, the modification to the lighting ordinance.
Right.
Is there anyone who likes being?
Yes, sir.
Here.
Here with free later and, uh. Commission members, my name is Robert Davis, two and two North Maple Street. I just wanna say that, uh, um. This has been a long road, as you folks know. And it's been brought before this board several times and taken back and brought before and taken back and brought before. I would like to impress upon everybody here. That first drafts are just that, first drafts. And they can be changed at any time down the road. So. I would impress upon all of you to move forward with this and get it done. Because it's been a labor. Both for Walt Windelowski and us on the gallery side to attend all these meetings. You folks here every day, uh, to. Uh, review the information. I think we're at a point where it can be. Done, and I would like to see it done. And we can all move forward and make some changes as time goes on. But that's all I've got to say and thank you for your time.
Alright, um. I guess we can open it up for discussion, uh, with the commission and I, I will. Remind everyone that there were some minor changes that we wanted done last month, um.
Could I just highlight those changes?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask Walt to highlight them.
Okay, real good, um. I got my tip, okay, uh, the staff report goes through the details. Obviously, as the, uh, previous person noted, we've gone through this a number of times. I'm only gonna focus in on this time with. The staff report obviously summarizes everything, but I'm just gonna focus in on the things we discussed at the October meeting. The effective date under definitions will now be within six months of final adoption. I believe that's consistent with the comments there. Um, with regard to parking lot lighting, um, the same provisions. Um. That are for the parking lot lighting will also be applied citywide. In other words, we have that discussion with, for example, a church or something like that with a large parking lot. We have standards in this code that we thought should apply elsewhere. I wanna emphasize that that doesn't mean the other lighting requirements apply. It just has to do with the parking lot. And so we put the provisions in what ten sixty-six also now applied to ten fifty-two. Um, I wanna stress that, again, local streets, street lighting are excluded from this. We don't have to go and change all the lamps on this public streets, so we're fine there. Also, uh, we changed the signage language a bit, simply to say. Allows, the new language allows direct or indirect illumination. We don't care. Provided all illumination is directed away from the adjacent property. Uh, there was a identified potential conflict with the central business district. Uh, provisions and this kind of made things, uh, consistent. The issue of holiday lighting, holiday lighting, the only comment is holiday lighting. As long as there's no glare on adjacent property. We didn't. I think everyone thinks holiday lighting is just before Thanksgiving to a little bit after New Year's. Um. Every, every neighborhood I drove through, uh, where I live in South Salem. Uh, had Halloween decorations up by about October third. So that to them a holiday, and if they wanna put up decorations. Um, I wouldn't wanna be the person that takes someone to court because they displayed American flags and a statue of Uncle Sam for Fourth of July. So as long as the lighting on the holiday, uh, stuff is not impacting the neighbor. And it's not producing glare, you're good to go. And with that, all the other findings that I previously reviewed are. There, they're still the same. There were no changes that I needed to make. And with that, it is my. Recommendation that the planning mission, um, pass on to the city council. The, uh, revised, uh, uh, um, chapter ten sixty-six for exterior lighting.
Okay, I have a question. Um, when businesses.
Real quick, we need that, just to make it official. So we never closed the public hearing, actually, but they, Walt, or. Robert's the only one who's here, so he already spoke, so, uh, do we need to take a motion to close the public hearing? Don't we, or do, don't we have to vote on that? Or do we?
I don't think so. This is, if there's only one speaker.
Okay, so we're, I just officially, we're officially, what's that?
Just say if there's no argument.
If there's no arguments against. Uh, we'll continue with, go ahead. I just wanna make it official.
My question is, uh, if we have businesses. That generally, within one hour after closing, is the statement. Um, businesses often have night crews cleaning. Is this being impinged upon in any way?
I don't believe so because. Uh, actually, it's something I did in my college days and basically some lights were on inside the building. But the, but the outside was dark and you're inside the building cleaning the floors and stocking shelves. You know, in that, in this, these regulations don't impact that whatsoever.
It, it's the exterior lighting.
It's the exterior.
But my concern is they're coming by way of exterior in and out and cleaning crews. So I'm saying if we're saying generally, um, are we going to be generally?
Well. Please understand too is that, uh, generally, you're, generally, you're also gonna have some exterior lighting on for. Safety measures and the code allows for those provisions. So yes, you'll probably have a little lamp over the main entrance to go inside it out. That's not the issue here. The issue is.
Okay.
The other lights, and again, most of the time, you just have interior lighting to help the folks inside to work, but not. Blaring, if you will, exterior lighting going on for those certain things. That was good. I liked that one.
Is there any other questions that anybody have or discussion? No. So we have, um. Basically, are the options. The options are that we can approve the proposed amendments and adopt the findings. We can recommend to approve, uh, the proposed amendments with modifications. We can reject the proposed amendments or we can take, continue to a future date and time, um. I would, I, I am in support of adopting the findings, continuing.
I'd like to make a motion.
Hey.
I would like to move that we approve ten sixty-six exterior lighting standards.
Okay, thank you.
Walt, you're there. Yeah.
Exactly. Alright, let's take a vote.
Or, or a lie.
Right, your eye, more eye. And with that, it is approved. The approval needs to go to city council, right?
Yes, yes.
Until the next Friday.
Alright, so we have new business, um, historical development update?
Well, actually, uh, if you, with your permission, I'm gonna actually combine the and A together.
Absolutely.
Um. After a lot of. Back and forth between, I think I'm on my fourth person now with ODOT. And I've been texting people and not getting phone calls and I could. Give you a whole sob story, but I recently, recently got confirmation. With ODOT region two, that we are in the budget to have the T S P. It's in writing. And I'm working with Brandon Williams, uh, of the region. And looking back at my notes. He noted that one option of working with ODOT as opposed to D L C D. Is that ODOT often has some extra money on these projects to do what's called thirty percent design. So in other words. There may be a situation where ODOT, historical, Main Street. Whatever can come together and look at not only a transportation plan. But the improvements necessary along Maple Street to help the city. So, uh, I've been, I've, we've been playing email confirmation with, uh, with, uh, historic. But when I got the information on the streets and talking to Br- Brandon some time ago. Uh, there might be a little more money than we think and that could help design our main street.
Wow, wow.
Words, yeah, so in other words, this is not just. Yeah, we'd like to do this, we'd like to do that, but if they can design it and we have a plan, that plan can then go for grants. Or we know what we're gonna do as opposed to guessing or assuming or like putting money that doesn't work. So I would just ask a little more patience as I kind of put these things together, um. Everyone I found out with the state doesn't work around the holidays, but I guess it's a good gig if you get it. And, uh, but Brandon is gonna give me a call after the first of December. And we're gonna start looking at things and seeing where we could take this and I'm going to, uh. Specifically remind him of his discussion about design. So with that, I'm hoping to come back with something a little bit more. Positive, but certainly the news tonight is not negative and I'm really pleased we finally got. The go-ahead to start working on the T S P.
That's good. Well, thank you, Walt. That's really great the way you're after that and we would not be here without you, so thank you so much.
I appreciate that. And I have one other bit of business. I wish everyone a very happy and thankful Thanksgiving.
Oh, thank you. Same to you.
Yes, definitely.
Thanks. Um, I believe, so before we adjourn. I believe that this is Mr. Carl's last meeting.
Hmm, in person.
In person.
Person.
Did he bring cookies?
Did, but ate them for a guy.
So, so there, there's a chance he might be zooming next month.
Yes.
Next month, alright. Well, I just wanted to say thank you for your service and helping out the commission. I appreciate it.
I had a lot of fun, learned a lot too.
Good.
Yeah.
Will you be on your two-year voyage when you zoom in next month?
I will be on it, yeah. We'll, we'll just be starting.
Do your journey, I mean, around.
Yeah.
Yep, exciting. Niagara Falls, I mean, it's cliche, but you gotta see that.
Definitely, definitely.
Alright, um, can I motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second. Second. Adjourn.